You all. It was going down today. Sorry, I'm a little late. I remember a little late, y'all. But yes. You all, it was going down today in the city council meeting. It was going down. So, hey, everybody. Hey, 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 you all. Hey, hey, hey. So I'm your trainer, Denny C Fitness Trainer. This is where fitness meets politics. This is where we at, y'all. So. How everybody doing? How everybody doing? Y'all good? Hey, 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 Ree Ree. How you doing? How you doing? Hey, so, y'all, it got crazy today at City Hall. It got crazy today. Yo, y'all mayor, yo mayor Brandon Johnson, yo mayor. Hey, you, hey, Pierre, yo mayor Brandon Johnson, who you all voted for. Crazy. It went down today. So, y'all, we was there today at the city council meeting. And we, it's like a, it's, it's like a reality show. I'm not lying. It's really like a reality show. He said, "Yo, Mayor." Nah, I didn't vote for him. You all voted for him. Y'all voted for that man, and now y'all leaving us picking up the pieces of this horrible administration. Y'all voted for that dude. We didn't vote for Mayor Mohawk. Y'all did that. So, as you all know, the council meeting was today, right? So we had the city council meeting today, and so you had this mayor. He couldn't stay on. What happened? Yeah, yeah. So he, uh, he, you know, you all know that he proposed our taxes to go up 300 million, right? A property tax hike, right? And so, uh, and so now, once he, um, once he proposed that, and they shut it down, right, all aldermen shut it down 50 to zero. And so now he came back, y'all. He came back with another proposal, 150, uh, 150 million. They shot that down because we told them, "Do not vote on anything." Y'all better not vote on anything to raise our taxes or anything like that. We wasn't playing. So then he came back, y'all, listen. They shot it down for the 300 million. Then they shot it down for the 150 million. Now this dude gonna come back and propose a 60 million property tax hike. I mean, come on, come on, come on. No, dude, how you gonna just keep trying to raise people taxes? So we just like, no, that's not gonna happen, and we dare you. Hey, Ms. Danny, I saw your shot, your short video earlier, the council meeting. Y'all were hilarious. It was crazy, y'all. That's why I also saw your earlier. You all, y'all, I'm gonna post the whole, I'm gonna, I'm gonna post the entire thing. Because we cooked them. We was cooking. Everybody was. And I'm gonna get everybody video, you all, because I wasn't able to get everybody video. I mean, everybody, oh my God, it was a star lineup. It was like Jordan. It was like when Jordan and Pippen, all them was up with the Bulls, and they was getting shot after shot after shot. That's how Brandon Johnson, we were just shooting them. Man, e- e- everybody got a chance to speak, and it was horrible to him. And, and we made it clear to those aldermen, "Don't y'all do it." So let me go start in a little bit. Let me just show. So y'all, like and, like and share the video, like and share. Because you all know, I, I try to give you all the, the tea before everybody, because you gonna see everybody go grab the videos from the council meeting, and they gonna be posting it. But we try to give you all the, uh, the just raw feed of when we in there and what's going on. So you all can kind of see it from the ground, see what we doing, okay? So this is what we try to bring you all, to let you all see what's going on. All right, so, girl, you pretty as hell, and you got good sense. Thank you, thank you. All right, so let me show y'all, okay, when it first started, you know, before he got here, because he was late. And we like, dude, why you late, loser? What you late for, loser? But this is how we just troll him because we had no respect for him, all right? We have no respect for this clown. Okay, so let me show y'all. So I had to take this video off my other phone and show y'all. Okay, let me see. Because this phone was tweaking. Remember, it was tweaking last time. Hopefully, it, it is good. All right. So I'm just gonna show y'all when we first got there. All right, what happened? Okay, let's move forward. Well, this is just the beginning. What's up, Stephanie? This is y'all aldermen. Okay, so. Okay, so that's how it all started, right? There was a loser. He was late. The aldermen, then it, it was some of those aldermen wasn't there yet, so that's what it is. They be late. So I'm just showing you all a little of the raw footage. I knew that was Emma Mix. Yeah, that was Emma. So, yeah, I seen that one. Laugh out loud. What's up, y'all? So that's like, that's in the beginning when we be just talking stuff, you know, playing around, things like that, right? So we was trying, we were making sure that we saw what they were voting on, how they were voting, and we wasn't playing with them, right? So, of course, he came late, and, all right, that was cool. He came late. So now, you know, in the, uh, before you get, before everything, they really get started on anything. Then you have the, uh, public speaking. So this is now. I'm getting ready to show y'all the raw footage of the public speaking, right? Trolling good. There goes the losers right there. Yeah, we trolling them, y'all. All right, so this is, okay, so this is Ms. Jessica, right? This is Ms. Jessica. Now she, this is what Ms. Jessica said. So let's see Ms. Jessica first, y'all, because we told you all, right? We told you all that we were gonna make, we was gonna do Famous Friday. That means every Friday, we're gonna be on Zo's channel. The first is gonna be, this Friday is gonna be on Zo's channel. The next Friday is gonna be on my channel. So we're gonna be, me, Ms. Jessica, and Zo Lee. We're going to, uh, pull, you know, pull a name out the hat. Whichever alderman we pull, that's, we gonna show you all what they're doing. We gonna let you all know what's happening with them, and we gonna put them on blast. If they did good or if they going bad, y'all gonna know about it. And then we're letting them know, hey, you up next. You up next. It's your turn to be famous. So, yeah, we gonna let them know. Ms. Jackson should have a cape. Yes. All right, so I told you all that, and Ms. Ms. Jackson told you that when we did our live together, right? So now, I told you all, today at the council meeting, then we gonna let them know what we gonna do. And I told you all, Jess, we looking out for it. So this is what Ms. Jackson did. So she let them know. Okay, let's go. This is Ms. Jackson. Look at him. But for people, y'all, y'all get your word too. Make sure y'all tune in, so you'll know what to expect when it's your turn for everybody who sat here and ain't helping me get my property. You gonna sit up here and watch them take my stuff from me? For every black person I know that get their property taken, that's a sin. That's gone. I couldn't believe that. I couldn't believe that. I hate that your name wasn't pulled first. That young man, Richardson Larry, we gonna get to her too. Get to them commissioners. Everybody who sat back and watching me be stressed out about my stuff. Tell Jesse Fuentez, tune in. We bout to make her famous. She said Jesse Fuentez. That's the alderman. So if that shows, you said, tell them, it's time. Where can I get one of those shirts? I love you guys. Thank you. You can get, uh, I'll, I'll leave, uh, everything, I'll leave everything, um, on here, you know, on the, uh, on the post in the comments when I finish. But, yeah, so you see what she did, right? Jesse Fuentez. So that's who's gonna be up. I buy one as well. Okay, so you all can go to, uh, ChicagoAllHandsOnDeck@gmail.com. ChicagoAllHandsOnDeck@gmail.com, and say you wanna, you know, order the shirt, and then, you know, uh, and then they'll take care of you. We'll take care of you. But, yes, so your alderman, that's coming up this Friday, we pulled the hat, is Jessica Fuentez, all right? So if that's your alderman, you wanna zoom, uh, tune in, so you gonna, you all go to Zo Lee's channel. Her name is Zo, Z-O-E-L-E-I-G-H-T. I'm gonna, uh, put her channel down here because that's, she's gonna be the first one this Friday. We gonna jump it off on her channel. Zo Lee's channel, that's gonna be our first one. And we're bringing to the front of the congregation, Ms. Jessica Fuentez. All right, now she bogus, and she been doing a lot of bogus stuff. I'm shaking in my boots. I might be next. So if you been, whatever you been doing, that's who we gonna be pulling that out your, we gonna be pulling the name out that hat. And that's what we doing. So you saw the alderman's faces, right? Let me let y'all see it again. It was epic, you all. You should saw Brandon Johnson, he looking like this. Because she was like, "We not stopping here because we want Karami Raoul, we want, uh, uh, Tony Perkwinkle." Oh, y'all, it was. It was funny. I'm gonna let y'all see it again. I'm gonna let y'all hear it again. I'm gonna let y'all hear it again, because what, but look at they faces. Look at they faces, y'all. Okay, wait a minute, let me, okay, let, let me go. Let me let y'all hear it again. Second word I gave is that who's gonna make y'all famous? And we gonna make y'all famous, starting with Famous Friday. Every Friday at 6 o'clock. We gonna be on Zo's YouTube. Tune in, Zo Lee, and we gonna get you one at a time, starting with, I'm gonna pull your name out of your ass. We gonna see who's a lucky person. Get you to go first. Let's see who's down here. Pull that name, give me that. Drum roll, please. Let's go. We gonna make famous. This week, Friday at 6 o'clock, featured on the Zo Lee YouTube, is all the person, because I'm not getting caught up in right now, so y'all. All the person, Jesse Fuentez. Yes, bout to make him famous, yes. You bout to be famous. But for people, y'all, y'all get your word too. Make sure y'all tune in, so you'll know what to expect when it's your turn for everybody who sat here and ain't helping me get my property. You gonna sit up here and watch them take my stuff from me? For every black person I know that get their property taken, that's a sin. That's gone. I couldn't believe that. I couldn't believe that. I hate that your name wasn't pulled first. That young man, Richardson Larry, we gonna get to her too. Get to them commissioners. Everybody who sat back and watching me be stressed out about my stuff. Tell Jesse Fuentez, tune in. We bout to make her famous. Okay, so I just played that again for the people who just got here. All right, that was Ms. Jessica telling them they bout to be famous, and she said this. She said this like a year ago, and she told them, "If y'all do it, we coming for those seats." She told them that, and now we doing that. All right, so, respect to you. Keep keeping people informed. Yes, we trying to keep y'all informed. I'm trying to give you all the raw deal, okay? So, now this was mine. So, uh, okay, so let me show you mine. And he tries to put my mic low, you all. They had my mic low. Okay, so here go mine. Okay, hold on. So, Brandon, Duke, and all these Democrat mayors out here, ain't governors. Y'all talking about crashing out for these illegals, right? You all stood there and said you would not allow Trump to come in here and get these illegals. Yet you could smell, we in a billion dollar deficit, and you spent half of our ones' half of that on illegals. You campaigned, you campaigned, and doubled down that you would not raise property taxes. I'm gonna say you campaigned with a wild door like that. And here we are right now. You wanted to raise our taxes 300 million. They shut it down. Now we back here for 150 million. Okay, see, this is what we asking now. Since you wanna crash out, some of y'all say y'all willing to go to jail for it. Trump, Tom Homan, make an example out this negro right here first. Please come here first. Because you know what? We gonna help. We run a forensic audit. We run a forensic audit. Wait a minute, y'all. So look. He tried to be, look, don't call me a negro. Don't call me a negro. Uh, don't you always go with that waste, that, that, that race baiting stuff? We Virginia's are standing with you, Chicago real thing. Hold on, don't you always do all that race baiting? Don't you always say, "I'm a black man with black kids and black, 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 black"? Negro, that's on your birth certificate. Negro, that's on your mama and father's birth certificate. You a negro. You looked at as a negro, negro. How you gonna try? So he pissed off, "Don't call me no negro," and this and that. You lucky, because I was about to call you nigger. Listen, nigger. So I was getting ready to call you worse than that. So. Why? Everything is because of his skin. No, he making about his skin color. That's why we, that's why we troll him. Because he's always, "I'm a black man with black kids and a black wife." Or he always talking about, "Y'all, y'all picking on me because I'm a black man." Or, "I'm a black man. A black man can't go spend this, that." That's it. Every time he get, anytime they get in his butt, wish they're right. I'm trying to look out for the black community, the black. No, you not. No, you not. Every chance you get, you making sure you stop on the black community. Stop putting our name in your mouth, Brandon Johnson. Do not use, do not mention us, negro. So he lucky I said that. So I wanted to go with the N-I-G-G-A. That's what I wanted to say. So. I know I hear him talk. Yeah, 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 yeah. He tried to go there. "Don't call me a negro, negro." Shut up, negro. Lock him up, Trump. Lock him up right now. So we ain't playing with him? Dude, you gets no respect. You ain't respect enough when we asking you not to raise our taxes. When we asking you to stop spending our money on illegals. When we asking you, we're a billion dollar in deficit, and the only thing you can do is come back and try to raise our taxes? After we telling you, we don't have it, you gonna try to raise our taxes? You weren't thinking about us when you stole Ms. Jessica and Zo and black people properly, property, negro, please. Negro, please. Stop, don't put black people's name in your mouth. So, yeah, that's what we on. Yeah, yeah, he capping for those migrants. So keep that same energy. So, yeah, here it go. So let me show, finish him on, y'all. Yeah, so he tried to go there. Let me go back a little bit. Let me go back. You wanted to raise our taxes 300 million. They shut it down. Now we back here for 150 million. Okay, see, this is what we asking now. Since you wanna crash out, some of y'all say y'all willing to go to jail for it. Trump, Tom Homan, make an example out this negro right here first. Please come here first, because you know what? We gonna help. We run a forensic audit. We run a forensic audit. Okay, so that's, that's what, that's what I had to tell them. Dude, y'all crashing out, right? Y'all crashing out for these illegals. Y'all going hard for them. Remember I showed you, uh, remember I told you Mike Rodriguez, he said that he's gonna spend all taxpayer money to get legal, legal services to go to take Trump to court if he tried to come and get those illegals out of his neighborhood. He's gonna spend all tax dollars and get to, uh, for their legal fees to make sure he take Trump to court for these illegals. And he said, "It's not just him, it's a lot of them." Okay, glad you told us that. Glad you said that. I'm glad it's you and a, and a lot of aldermen working together to take all tax money and spending on illegals, even though we in a billion dollar deficit. Okay, we cool with that. We got that. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mike Rodriguez, for letting us know where you stand. So we got you. Jennifer Twitty, yeah, so we already so thankful and proud of you. Yes, because Tom Homan is not playing. That's what I'm saying. We cool, we cool, and that's why I said, write what I said. Trump, Tom Homan, please make an example out this negro. If this negro say he ready to go to jail, and these Democrat mayors standing saying they ready to go to jail, Mike Johnson in Denver, all I'm talking about, they ready to go to jail. Let's throw him in jail. Let's do it. Give them what they act, let's see how, let's see, let, let them stand on business. I wanna see them stand on business. I wanna see them, do you really believe, and do you really believe that in these illegals? Are y'all, this is what y'all believe, stand on and take your butt to jail? And Trump, please make an example out of this nigga first. Let this negro go first. Lock him up first. And not only, like I said, and not only do you lock him up for aiding, aiding and abetting illegal aliens, criminals? Not only do you lock him up for that, we want a forensic audit. So lock this nigga up for stealing our, uh, money on these illegals. Because we know all that money that he had allocated for those illegals didn't get, uh, he, they spent some too. Him, CTU, we know they spent a lot of that money. So not only do you lock him up for harboring illegal aliens, criminals, then you lock him up for stealing money. Let's go, let's, let's go crash out. You wanna crash out? You wanna crash out? We finna crash out. We finna show y'all how we crash out. We not playing with them, and you steady gonna try to go up on our taxes, and then you campaign. This man campaigned off, "Don't I never go raise y'all taxes." That's a weak man to raise taxes. Y'all, he went, he says some, I'm gonna see if I can find that video. Went, oh, he went far, talking about how he'll never raise our taxes. I didn't vote for him, but clearly, people fell for that garbage. And now you see, with this idiot, don't have a clue how to run nothing. He was a social studies teacher. So, yeah, so, yeah, he gets no respect. Yeah, so we want Tom Homan, we want Trump to come here and make example out of this negro first, period. If you about that life, we want you to be about that life. Please show us how to be about this life. Please show us. If y'all so into, if y'all believe and standing on these illegals have a right to be here and blah, 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 and how y'all wanna help them, then please go to jail for them. Please do. Because we ready to send you. We ready to help Trump and Tom Homan. We ready to send y'all, get y'all exactly what y'all want. We ready for it. Well, I don't, Chicago keep vote Democrat, but I think they waking up. They waking up now. They're definitely waking up. So, it's, nah, they waking up. So now let me show you. All right, let me show you, uh, so that was me. So actually, you all, we had three meetings today. So it was, uh, the city council meeting, the budget meeting, because they were seeing what was it, uh, far as spending money on the budget, like transportation, cops, and all that stuff like that. So we had three meetings. So I just took, so these are, let me show you the videos. I got a bunch of them, but it's on this phone, so I just had to get, you know, record it off this phone, but I'm be posting them. Okay, so the videos, period. All right, so let's, um, all right, let's go see. Okay, that was, that was mine. Okay, this is David from, uh, David. Now Dave, I'm gonna bring him on the show. I'm, I'm most likely gonna have him on the show, uh, Wednesday. And David is a part of Chicago Flips Red also. So you're all gonna be. So you're all gonna be hearing from, uh, David. I wanna say Wednesday. We might, we gonna do something together Wednesday. I'm gonna bring him on the show to, uh, Wednesday. Okay? So. Definitely need state ID for voting, and that's what it is, you all. What it is, is, we do not have state, uh, voters' ID. And that's why, if you notice, all these Democratic, uh, place, all these Democratic cities and states, they are against voters' ID. Because they know they got a bunch of, a ton of illegals here and they're going to vote Democrat. And so, we, uh, the citizens are not voting for this garbage. But they let, allow so many illegals here and they're giving them driver's licenses. I saw my own ass. And they're giving them, they're, when they get their driver's license, they're resisting them, them to vote. So yes, they're, they are the ones voting a lot in these elections. And they are voting Democrat. So it's offsetting the, our votes. That's the problem. We need Trump to start mandating that we have voters' ID. Period. So. Yeah, so look, all right, so let me show you. So, okay, so let me see, let me let you hear Dave. So this is Dave, y'all. David is short this week.
(inaudible) You don't stand on Jesus. He brought one of them pretty corrupting tax hike. Trying to push the half odds to house the president, little immigrants. You tell Trump you ain't gonna leave, then we ain't leaving.
Right.
You win the burger law and let me go to my Trump, there's a Trump on you. I will make it my duty to try to get my special for Operation Great Lord. 2.0 in Chicago and like all your country Democrats and just like that.
I'm gonna let y'all get it here.
You don't stand on Jesus. He brought one of them pretty corrupting tax hike. Trying to push the half odds to house the president, little immigrants. You tell Trump you ain't gonna leave, then we ain't leaving.
Right.
You win the burger law and let me go to my Trump, there's a Trump on you. I will make it my duty to try to get my special for Operation Great Lord. 2.0 in Chicago and like all your country Democrats and just like that.
He did it real short this week. What did he say? "What you gonna do when Trump pull a Trump card on you?" That was good. He said, "What you gonna do when Trump pull the Trump card out on you?" Dude. We wanna, we want Operation Great Lord, like he said. What did he say, Operation Great Lord? That's what, what is Greg, Great Lord? But like he said, that's what he calling for. That's what he called, that's what Dave calling for. So, ain't nobody playing with these people. We're at war to save the, yeah, foundation of black America economy. Yes, I'm just here to say, "Thank you, Danielle Carter. Thank you for helping to wake the sleeping." Thank you, Barry. Thank you so much. You need to be a US citizen to vote. Your citizenship is verified as you vote. Stop it, stop it. You don't need to be no US citizen to vote. Stop that lie. You're a Democrat. That's a lie. No, you don't. No, you don't. You supposed to be a US citizen, but no, you don't. All right, we know that, we, they proved that during this election. That illegals voted. Even the Chinese guy who turned his own self in, who was illegal and voted. And the only reason why they found out, he voted because he turned his own self in, told on his own self. So stop it. Stop with the, with the lies. Stop with that, "You must be an illegal." That's all. You must be an illegal. If you wanna push that lie, because we know, you can listen to them, to MSDNC if you want to. Like I said, this, this channel is telling you what's real. We not telling you the lies that mainstream media is telling you and pushing. We telling you what we see with our ass and what's really going on. So, all that little stuff y'all talking, you talking. Whatever your name is, yeah, you must be a meal because I can see your name. Then, go with that. Go with that. So this was Zoe. So this was Zoe at the, um... Uh, let me show you P Ray. So this was P Ray. So P Ray talked about it at the...
Red helmet, that's what we need is growing. That's what we want to forget that. Oh, I'm sure because we all have the right to meet again. I'm not sitting in my seat.
Okay, hold on, hold on, let me say something.
Red helmet, that's what we need is growing. That's what we want to forget that.
So what she was saying is, I don't know if you all can hear me, but one of the aldermen's had Make America Great Again hat on. He had a helmet on. So she was just acknowledging the, uh, alderman who he had the Make America Great, uh, helmet on. Let me let y'all see him because it's a little, let me see if you can see. Okay, it's a little blurry, but he had the Make America Great hat on. So she was acknowledging him. All right, so let's see.
Red helmet, that's what we need is growing. That's what we want to forget that. Oh, I'm sure because we all have the right to meet again. I'm not sitting in my seat. But I went to school and I got five years degrees. What I know is that the budget is going to be dictated by the policies in which you guys merge with. As you stand here in this house, we keep saying, "Get rid of the illegals." The first way that has to happen is through suspending the sanctuary city ordinance. There's gonna be no way for you all to reduce spending for the migrants, even though we are the migrants. Stop calling these people migrants. It is disrespectful to our ancestors who migrated from the South as American citizens. These are illegal aliens. Because you guys have policy in place to protect these people, you then have to have broad enough allocations to fund those policies. Therefore, we have to get rid of the policy. The conversation should be nothing more than getting rid of the sanctuary city ordinance. If that's not the conversation, then you guys are gaslighting us. You guys are playing with us. You all think that you're the smartest people in the room and I'm gonna tell you I'm a Chicago public school graduate. I can read, write, and count extremely well. And like I said before, I'm not gonna trick me and play on you. Y'all are playing a trick on us. Because what's happening here, like I said, we're proud of, too much, that's the point. I am proud that y'all did what you were supposed to do. However, we have to get past the performative measures of the council. The council has to get to the meat of what you're doing, and that is legislation and policy. If you are not talking about suspending that sanctuary rule in any way, then this policy, this budget discussion is moot. Because you're gonna have to continue to fund them. So once again, for the 18th time, please revisit the sanctuary city ordinance so that we can demagnetize our city from illegal immigration. Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes.
Red helmet, that's what we need is growing.
So P Ray was basically telling them, "You, listen, long as we have this sanctuary city ordinance, if that's, that we allow Chicago to be a sanctuary city, then we gonna keep having this problem, you all, because they gonna find a way to fund them." They're gonna find a way to spend our money on them. So we need to push for this, to Chicago not to be a sanctuary city anymore. That's what we need to be pushing. Those are the laws that we need to be trying to get implemented. That we no longer want Chicago to be a sanctuary city. So that's basically what she was saying. If we keep allowing us to be called, and, and allowed to be a sanctuary city, then we will still have to fund this. We will, they still would be stealing money and getting money to fund illegals because we are a sanctuary city. So that's why we're calling for, we don't want to be a sanctuary city anymore, period. And we're asking Trump to dismantle to this, to get rid of sanctuary cities, period. Because all sanctuary cities do is harbor criminals. That's what we're asking Trump to do. All right, so that's basically what she was saying. All right? So, uh, and now, the last one, I'm gonna let y'all hear, uh, uh, Zoe. So I let y'all, I'm gonna let y'all hear Zoe because we wasn't playing and this is where we at. All right? Let's see. All right, here goes Zoe.
(inaudible) The city of Chicago violated, the federal department violated the Fifth Amendment, which is the law that we have in the US Constitution. Y'all hate me. Y'all hate my family. Y'all been stealing black people's property in the name of building violations, which is really an illegal 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 scheme, right? We can't find Attorney General Paul Rudd. This is why Tom, this is why Tom McHarrison went. Because she was a terrible Attorney General in California. That's exactly why she did it. And, but I don't think that's a toss. This man right here, Quanmi Raul.
Quanmi Raul.
He paid 202,000 dollars a year. Okay, and then this is Danny Kaye, this is my, that other Republican candidate. You've got John, you know, the President of Illinois said, John Clarkson. You've got the CTU Chicago teachers, they never can follow. Okay, he got a good kind of crap party, you all, but you know how that works. Okay, on May 7, 2024, Illinois GOP Chairman Dan Tridont said, "Another day, another Illinois Democrat is facing a corruption need we talk on the fifth hand." That day's going to run 12, that day, you know, 12 million retired and Illinois Republican Party Chairman are gone. And Illinois, um...
Oh, okay, that's my bomb.
Attorney General Paul Rudd was never involved. The state attorney general, Attorney General, 2019. While he's avoiding every opportunity, takes a stand in action to address all the corruption and work to destroy this, nothing short of, um, uh, the... Raul must show his boot taken on public corruption. I want us to start calling for Attorney General to win. Five grand to Raul and still a black people's path.
Yes, yes. So basically, like she's saying, where's Quanmi Raul? Why we can't get in touch with Quanmi Raul? He supposed to be seeing what's going on, what's going on with him. Where is he? That's why we keep saying these state attorneys, all these people have to go. They're useless and they're getting a lot of money. A lot of money they're getting paid to be useless. We, and this is, and one of the, I proposed in the budget, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show y'all the video, but I didn't have that video. That, one of the proposals that I proposed to Brandon Johnson, when he talking about cut, cutting the budget and trying to cut, uh, and prop, and, and raise our taxes. No, dude, why don't you, why don't you cut your budget? Why don't you, the money that you're making, Brandon Johnson? Because you're the worst mayor in American history? Because you're gonna go down as the worst mayor? How about we start with your salary? We're trying to find money for these, for this billion dollar deficit we are in. We're trying to find money and your proposal was to tax the Chicago citizens 300 million. How about let's propose this? Let's propose that you, because you are the worst mayor in American history, let's start with your salary. Let's start with that. I think that'll be a great, let's, we can start with that. That'll save the taxpayer, that'll save Chicago a lot of money. So let's start with that, Brandon Johnson. Then after that, let's start with the 200 CPD detail you have. 200 officers of, from CPD, that's what you have for your detail, for your security detail. So, remember you all, the Democrats told us to defund the police. They told us that we should defund the police. And that's why now, we don't have any police officers. We're down almost 2,000 police officers. And crime is up, police officers, we don't have enough of them. So we're just the, uh, citizens, we're just out here on our own. So, remember Brandon Johnson, this is what I proposed to him today. And I'm gonna show you all that video, uh, another time. How about we, because you're, you remember, y'all Democrats not for the police. You all want to defund the police. So how about we take all those police that you using to protect yourself? How about we take them and you don't have no police? Because you're not for police, remember. You said defund them. So I just want them to stop, to practice what they preach. It's like, how can you say, tell us to defund the police all while you have 200 CPD officers on your detail alone? So are we for defunding the police or do we want police? I mean, let me know. Because all this, what the Democrat Party do is, if you notice, they tell you one thing and they do the opposite. They encourage you to do one thing, but yet they do the opposite. What are we doing here? So, let's defund your, the whole 200 police squad you have, Brandon Johnson. We, let's defund that. That, that's, that would save us a bunch of money, you all. We'll have a bunch of money saved. Yes, now let's start with these aldermen who have gotten raises. All these aldermen, and when we bring them to the forefront, we're gonna tell you what they make. We're gonna tell you what they used to make and we're gonna tell you what they have, what they, the raise they, they have gotten. So, how about we start with those things? Let's just clean in-house first. Let's just cut the fat off right there. And let's, not only that, the CTU. You all, the CTU is stealing a bunch of money. They all a bunch of crooks. The CTU need to be investigated and they need to be locked up. So let's start with them. Let's get all that money, millions and millions and millions they're stealing, Brandon Johnson. And then, guess what? And let's stop the money for the illegals. And guess what, you all? We would not be in a deficit. We won't need to raise taxes. That's our money right there. That's our money right there. That's how we thrive as a city. Cut the fat. Cut they, cut they checks. Let's do that. Remember you all, he just did, his wife, uh, what'd he do, her office? $80,000 just on renovating his wife's office? What, a, a floor and a desk and things like that? Come, how about we just start there? Let's just start with Brandon Johnson. Cut, what, what, what he, for his mohawk, for his makeup, what he paying? 30,000? 30,000? Was it 30,000 a month? For just that mohawk, you know, that mohawk, yeah, and the makeup? Let's start right there, you all. Let's start, what, when, did you, didn't he just go to the Bears gang in Paris with our money? Let's start with that. Let's start cutting their money first. And then, when we start, when you all take a pay cut, when you all take a, uh, when you all do that, then maybe that would incentivize us as American citizens to do that. But until you all do that, hypocrite Democrats, until you all do that, until you all be the example, then don't ask us to do anything that you are not willing to do. How about that? How about that? Just be an example. Brandon Johnson, go to jail first. We wanna see you go to jail for these illegal. Be, be, be an example to us. And then maybe, if we see you go to jail with passion, if we see you go to jail and sit there for what you believe in, then maybe we might say, "Okay." Maybe, 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 maybe we could do that. Maybe, let's just revisit that again. Maybe we are being so harsh on these illegals. Maybe. But until you do that, stop asking us to do something that you are never going to do and that you are not willing to do. All right, let's start there. Okay, you all, so, I just want to come on here real quickly and show you all, I told you all that I was gonna let you all see some of the raw footage we had gotten from the city council meeting. So, I got a lot of more, I got a lot, uh, a lot of videos on my phone that, um, I'm going to be posting. And a lot of times, I'm gonna be posting on YouTube those videos, and I will post them on here. And, uh, to let you all see exactly what's going on. So, that's what we are, you know, that's what I wanted to show you all, the raw footage. And let you all, give you all some context on what's going on. So, today, they, he's proposing a 60 million, so he went for 300 million, uh, tax hike. Now he went to 150 million. Now he's down to 60 million. So we're still saying, do not raise...